Good evening Placerville. It is six o'clock and it is my pleasure to call to order the March 26, 2013. Are you guys done? Regularly scheduled meeting of the Placerville City Council. And we have an esteemed guest in the house although I don't know where he went. Oh, they're there, he's in the back row. We have our lobbyist from Washington DC today that I would like to invite to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so would you please stand? And Mr. Church, you can do the honors.
If you face the flag, hand on our hearts, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And good evening Mrs. Edo. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Barelli.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hagan.
Here.
Mayor Mattson.
Here.
Councilmember Patton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Here.
Thank you. And with that, we move on to item three, announcements and presentations to the public. And like I just mentioned, we have two special guests, Mr. David Church, who is our lobbyist from Washington DC, and his fearless assistant, Madeline. And they have come all the way from DC just to visit Placerville. And so we are honored to have them here today. Mr. Church has been our lobbyist for over ten years and he has been instrumental in securing funding for our fabulous Gold Bug Park, the Western Placerville Interchange, the wastewater treatment plant, the ever-popular wastewater treatment plant, and the Placerville Station Park and Ride, among others. So, all of us have greatly benefited from his skills and abilities and we welcome you to our town. And so with that, I'd like to invite David to come up and say a few words about the climate in Washington and how things are in the world of financing. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. When you want me to talk about how things are in Washington and then you preface that by saying a few words, I don't know that that's possible. Madam Mayor, members of the council and citizens of the great town of Placerville, I'm just delighted to be here always. It's great to be in this community. Over a decade ago, we promised you that we would work hard on your behalf. And I'm here in part to renew that promise tonight and tell you that we'll continue to work hard on the interests of this community and at least to plow some federal funds back here since that's really our charge. I think the first thing I want to say is that to better serve you, I've made really major changes in the firm about which you should be aware. We have re-employed Vic Tambone, some of you may remember him from some years back. He left the firm to become a deputy at Homeland Security. He does very much of our base closure, BRAC activities and military, a former fairly high-ranking Air Force official. We've added former Congressman Todd Teheart. As I'm generally pleased to say, I'm redundant when I say he's a conservative Republican from Kansas. Ran for the Senate two years ago, didn't quite make it, has no interest in returning to the House. He was a fairly senior member of the House Appropriations Committee. We're pleased to have him on staff. We've added the Chief of Staff to former Chairman of the House Transportation and Infrastructure Committee, Bill Richard. Has just a plethora of contacts everywhere in the executive branch downtown. We've also added the Campaign Manager and Legislative Assistant, who's one of the really bright stars of the firm, to Congresswoman and former Presidential Candidate, Michelle Bachman. In addition to that, one of the real upcoming stars is the young lady who's with me tonight, Madeline Morkin. And we're so pleased to have her. I will continue to pay very close, personal attention to this community. I don't know that that's to your advantage, but Madeline's certainly going to help me do that and that will be to your advantage. Washington, as you know, is dysfunctional. It's not working very well for lots of reasons. I think one of the reasons is that we have, in the last two speakerships, really concentrated power in the office of the Speaker as opposed to the committee chairs. The committee chairs tended to be single-issue people. They worked well with ranking members since they each understood the issue and they could define the problems, not always agreeing on the solution. Now having concentration of power in the speakership, everything is kind of political. Kind of political. It's not kind of political. It is political. And it really results in a deadlock. There is a strong push between and among particularly senior members to return to what we call regular order. Regular order would replace some of the power of the speakership with added committee chairs and the ranking members. And I think that would solve some of our problems, although not all. The big problem, of course, is just money. You read about sequestration. Sequestration is such a funny animal because although theoretically it applies across the board to discretionary spending, it really doesn't. Medicare by law can only be reduced by 2%. The VA is immune. You've read in the papers, I think, about how inordinately it affects the Department of Defense. It does that because military personnel, like the VA, are immune from any cuts in sequestration. That means that the percentage that has to be removed from budget by the Pentagon really has a multiplier effect since armed personnel are a fairly large proportion of the Pentagon budget. We can talk about transportation a little bit because I think our problems with funding directly involve transportation. And I know transportation over the years has been of vital interest to this community. We passed last year MAP 21. It's called Moving Ahead for Progress in the 21st Century. I frequently think MAP 21 really referred to moving against progress in the 21st century, but then who am I to make up names for their bills? It was really a compromise bill by our own Senator Barbara Boxer and Senator Shelby. They worked well together in producing a bipartisan bill, but it's nowhere close to what we have for transportation difficulties and needs in America, not just wants, needs. It provides $105 billion over two fiscal years. That's its first problem. It's a two-year bill when ICE-T, T-21, and Safe-T-Lu were all six-year bills. You just can't plan and build a project in two years. We require that kind of multi-year legislation in order to do any kind of beneficial service to your constituents, my clients, the citizens of this nation by being able to do decent transportation projects. The best we could do was two years in MAP 21. It provides $105 billion for both, well, $52.5 billion for each of the two years. Of the $105 billion, roughly $82 billion goes for roads and bridges. About $21 billion goes for mass transit. And then the remaining, what is it, $2 billion, goes for research and safety. To give you an idea of what the shortfall is like, the American Society of Engineers has just published a study saying that for America to just maintain and keep up with its transportation requirements, we should be spending $170 billion a year on transportation for roads and bridges. We're spending totally in the bill, 52.5. If you look at only roads and bridges, we're spending, what, 40? 41. That's our shortfall in America. The difficulty isn't that we don't want to build roads, that we don't want to keep our bridges in good repair. It's that we can't find the funding source to do it. In 1993 was the last time we increased the gas tax. It's 18.3 or 18.4 cents, I don't know, whatever it is. What does it buy you today? Nine cents worth of construction? When the prices have escalated since 1993 by how many hundreds percent? So, we're just not getting a bang for the buck anymore. And in any event, the gas tax really doesn't give us the kind of revenue stream. You know, the gas tax was a good idea when cars got eight miles a gallon. Now they get 35 and we have electric cars that aren't paying any gas tax. The gas tax is kind of an interesting phenomenon anyway. I'm asked sometimes why we don't, why we build all of these highways and then don't maintain the darned things? Well, it goes back really to the inception of the gas tax. The gas tax was created in the Eisenhower administration as a one-time charge to Americans to build the interstate highway system. A part of that contract with the states was that we'll build it and you maintained it. And that charge has gone on to this day where the feds feel responsible to provide money to build. But the compact with the states was that you maintain while we build. And so, the answer to questions that arise with me so often, like, why don't we maintain this stuff? Well, it's a violation of the original contract. Now, I don't know that that contract with the state shouldn't be changed, but the gas tax is insufficient. We don't know where we're going in the future. Where that relates directly to this community is I would urge you to pay attention to behind-the-scenes negotiations going on with Ways and Means Committee Chairman in the House, Dave Kemp from Michigan, and for Finance Committee Chairman in the Senate, Max Bacus from Montana. And for several years, they've been meeting behind the scenes to change, I hate to use the word when we say taxes, simplify, let's just say they change, the tax structure for the United States. If that happens, they may be able to come up with some money for transportation and some other things. As you're looking for historical funding into the future and some of the items desperately needed in this community, what I can tell you is that we have a great focus at the moment on the debt and the deficit. Now, they're two different things, but the debt is the accumulation of all the deficits and surpluses since the inception of the United States and the deficit is the shortfall we might run in any year. The deficit is decreasing rapidly. The debt, currently, is about half accounted for by the recession, or at least the great increase in the debt recently, about half accounted for by the recession, about a fourth by the wars in Iraq and Afghanistan, never paid for, and about a fourth by the Bush tax cuts, which in its infinite wisdom, Congress has now extended permanently. When we look ahead, the debt really isn't a problem and deficits aren't a problem for the next three, two, six years, after which they become a very large problem. But the problem is different from the one that got us to where we are now. So what we're doing in Washington is paying attention to discretionary spending, but it isn't going to matter as we look forward to debt. It's really entitlements and how much have you heard about modifying entitlements? Yeah, we talk about it a little bit on the edges, but it's kind of where the votes are. No one's in favor of really tackling the real problem we're going to have within a half a dozen of the next years. So, that's kind of overall where we are in Washington. We're confused. Nothing's working very well. And I can tell you, it's absolutely made for a lobbyist to work that system these days. So, thank you for listening to me. I'll be happy to answer any questions if they're difficult questions. It's why Ms. Morkin's here.
Thank you, Mr. Church. Are there any questions from council?
I just want to thank you for meeting with me earlier today and looking forward to seeing you in a few weeks when I'm back in Washington with the cap to cap.
And I too want to say thank you for all you're doing and what you're going to do for us in the future. I appreciate all the information that you get back to us and all your help. I know you work real hard for us, so thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And sometimes I just make this stuff up, but it sounds pretty good.
Well, you're really convincing. We believe you.
It was a pleasure. We're so happy you brought Madeline. It was a pleasure to meet her. And she's already, I had lunch with them this afternoon and this afternoon, Madeline already researched several ideas for funding sources for historical preservation for us. So, look forward to the continued good work and wisdom and inspiration for funding sources for our fair city. So, wish you safe travels and thank you so much for being with us tonight.
Thank you again for listening to me.
Absolutely. And Carl, we look forward to you going back. Like you said, on cap to cap, the city manager and staff are gathering a punch list for Carl to go back and talk about funding sources for. So, good night, David and Madeline. And before we get on to the next announcement, you may have seen the mad cameraman dashing around. Can I have that magazine? Rebecca and David are here from the 50 Corridor Magazine, this gorgeous magazine, and they are taking our pictures for a feature there. So, welcome tonight and we'll, do I have anything on my teeth? No. Thank you for being here. And with that, I understand our chief has an announcement, so I'd like to turn it over to you, Chief Nielsen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council and for our community. We're real happy to make an announcement tonight. You might have seen, if you're going to the city's website, you might have seen in the announcement section that we have the ability for a new Public Safety Community Outreach. It's called NIXLE Alerts, N-I-X-L-E Alerts. And it's a program where we've been able to set up to kind of jump into the 21st century and to be able to reach out to people who want to sign up. This is an opt-in or opt-out type of service. But you can go to our website, you can opt-in to receive public safety alerts from us, and it's going to be a variety of different messages out to the public. They basically come kind of in three categories. There's alerts, which are basically emergencies. We might want to put something out quickly to subscribers and hopefully, the entire community is going to want to subscribe or will have a lot of subscribers to get information out accurately and quickly. But we want to be able to put that information out. So, there's alerts, which are emergencies. There are advisories, which are kind of the middle of the road, they're advisories. And then there's community messages. And so, for the alerts and the advisories, you can sign up and receive those both by email and by text on your phone. And then the community messages are for email only so that we're not cluttering people's texts with just announcements, if you will, that's meaningful, more like emergency type of information. So, the types of information might be that there is a waterline breakage and where the city is responding to that. There could be a road closed because of a traffic collision or something and we're responding to that and we can put those messages out. And so, we're really excited that we're able to do this and it also allows us to put out just community events, like we have a special event that's downtown, whatever that might be, the wagon train event, Art and Wine Festival, Brew Fest, whatever the events are, we can put those out as well because we have a public safety response to those where the road is closed and that might be of interest to people who either want to attend the event or be aware of how to get around the barricades or road blockages and so forth. So, the easiest way, this is something very easy for people to do, it's right on our, the front page of our website and it says, "Public Safety and Community Events, Get NIXLE Alerts." So, get your local alert sent directly to your phone or email and you can sign up by going to our website. You can sign up right off that announcement section. You can supply your phone number, your email, and your zip code, and the zip code, and it will, it will register, it will sign you up to receive those messages. And if you, if you sign up for the text only, you're going to get the alerts and the advisories and you're not going to get the community messages. If you sign up for the email as well, then you get all the messages that come your way. So, we hope to put out messages, you know, on a very regular basis and certainly when there's emergencies and advisory situations. And we welcome people to go to the city's website, so citiofplacerville.org, and it'll, it's very easy to follow in the right-hand side. You just sign up right from there and it'll direct you how to, how to sign up. It's a very easy, three-step little process.
What a wonderful way, what a wonderful way for our residents and our businesses to get accurate, timely information. I can, I can think of many times in this past, you know, year that that would have been incredibly helpful to have in place. Couple of questions, Chief. I assume this is a free subscription that people sign up for. It doesn't cost them anything?
Right, absolutely. It's a free opt-in. You can opt out if, whenever you want, however you want.
Fantastic. And is the police department monitoring this program and where, where's that information coming from?
It's coming from the police department and we're monitoring it within the police department. This is focused on public safety messages and messages that have to do with safety issues.
That's fantastic. Wonderful. Is there any council member, have any comments? Yes, Mr. Morris?
Sorry. I just want to mention, I asked the chief to put this on tonight and make this announcement as we got it up on our website, just starting today, they got it on our website. But I was talking to our IT person and I just want to mention, if you're worried about, oh, I'm going to all of a sudden get all these text messages on my phone, that won't be the case. Those text messages, the alerts and advisories, his estimate to me, so, you know, maybe if we get three or four a month, because those are truly emergencies that we use. The community events that will be in email, those could be a little bit more often based on, you know, community events that we have and et cetera. But I just want to assure you that you're not going to all of a sudden be getting, you know, five texts a day from the police department regarding these. It will be true emergencies and alerts that we will use this for. No ads. No ads.
Well, and you know, we'll just put it this way. This is kind of our national night out on the web. It's our way to reach out and connect with people and we've been searching for ways to do that in an economical way to do that because, and this is a very economical way because it's free.
That's fantastic.
So, we can, we can utilize it for free. We'll, like Cleve said, on the text, on the alerts and advisories, it's only going to be three or four a month. The community messages may be a little bit more than that on the email, but it's, it's not going to be a barrage of messages from the police department. We don't have the staff to do that anyway, so.
Well, thank you. Any other council member?
Is there, Chief, is there a way to just do the emails or do you have to do the texting?
No, you can just do the emails, correct.
And you can still get the advisory?
If you do the emails, yeah, you will, you should get the alerts, the advisories and the community messages.
You get everything.
Yeah, I believe so.
You can invite email rather than text.
Right.
With the email. And the text, you only get the alerts and advisories and not, not the community messages.
I think this is great. So many times, and I don't think too often is too often. So many times, you know, people, the word, you know, we get these rumor things going and this way we'll get the straight scoop and so, I think it's a great idea. Thank you for pursuing that.
You bet.
Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you so much, Chief. I'll sign up when I get done here tonight. All right. And we have one more presentation announcement to the public and at this point, I'd like to invite Larry Alum up to the podium. I asked Larry to attend tonight's council meeting and some of you may recognize him from the fabulous article by our very own Wendy Schultz that was in yesterday's Mountain Democrat. Front page above the fold, Larry? That's pretty impressive, pretty impressive. And for those of you who don't know, Larry is a resident of Hangtown Haven and he has been instrumental in helping us establish this legal encampment as well as establishing the leadership in the camp. And he has some exciting news to share with us, so, welcome Larry.
Thank you all for having me here, council, Chief Nielsen, Madam Mayor. I've got a lot to say. I don't know if I'm going to go off this script I got here, but I better stick to it. Almost a year ago to the day, I found myself at the CRC, homeless, not by anyone's fault but my own. I was ashamed, I was embarrassed, mostly I was lost. Shortly thereafter, I met Ron Sacks and Mr. Art Edwards over here. These two men had a plan for a legal homeless camp. I saw the blueprints here at a town hall meeting one night and I just, I kind of giggled. I said, "It looked good on paper." Those two men had a dream and that dream became my reality. We broke ground in July. I feel honored and blessed to be a part of their dream. Being on the community council, the governing body in Hangtown Haven, helping keep the camp up and running, even in difficult times, has been very rewarding. And for all us living at the camp, it's a temporary home and Hangtown Haven's had its ups and downs. And with that being said, it's success, it's a success by anyone's measure. I'm no longer to say, I am no longer ashamed to say I'm homeless, but rather, I'm proud to say I'm from Hangtown Haven. I just recently have been afforded the opportunity to have a job, a home, and become a functioning member of society. Regrettably, I have to leave Hangtown Haven. Hangtown Haven will always be, have a place in my heart. We're a family. I hope the city council, as well as the Elrod County Board of Supervisors, realize the camp works. I'm proof of that. Having the responsibility of helping to establish a camp and helping to run has prepared me for the next step in my life. Living in the camp has given me time, space, and a place to reset my life. I may be homeless, but I'm not a hopeless man. There are many others in the camp just like me that just need a chance. Placerville's decision to allow the legal homeless camp is a precedent setting. Many other counties and states have come to look at Hangtown Haven. It's working. They want a model program just after us. And, sorry, I'm getting touched. I just hope that the Board of Supervisors jumps on and starts supporting and gives Hangtown Haven a place to call home. That's about it. I want to thank you all very much. I'm honored and, I mean, how many times does a homeless man get invited to a city council meeting? I want to thank you all very much.
Well, thank you, Larry.
Thank you, ma'am.
And what Larry has accomplished is what Hangtown Haven is all about. And I asked him here tonight because Hangtown Haven is not about enabling people, but empowering them. And Larry's success story is proof of that. So Larry, tonight, we celebrate this progressive step forward in your life.
Thank you.
We wish you well on your new ventures forward and we thank you for your assistance in ensuring that Hangtown Haven is a safe, effective place to regroup, recharge, reset, so that you can re-enter society in a productive way. And we wish you well. Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you all.
Wonderful. Thanks everyone for being here tonight. So with that, we move on to item four, closed session report. Mr. Driscoll.
Madam Mayor, tonight, the council did not take reportable action in closed session.
Thank you. Item five, adoption of agenda. Are there any changes or do we have a move for approval?
Moved by Councilmember Barelli, seconded by Councilmember Patton.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ceremonial matters, non-scheduled. With that, we move on to the public comment portion of our meeting. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Please limit your comments to three minutes and come forward. Oh, before we do that, I always mess up on this. Is there any written communication?
There are none.
All right. So with that, if anyone would like to address the council, please come forward. And state your name for the record, please. Good evening.
Evelyn Veerkamp, Placerville. I've just had a third item added on to my agenda of what I want to say right now and that is that periodically, we see in the papers and elsewhere complaints about Hangtown Haven and troubles on the trail and so on and so forth. I'm on the trail fairly regularly and I'm also in those areas which have been commented on publicly. I've never had a problem and I just wish all these people the best of everything. There but for the grace of God go I and many other people. Well done. The second thing is I would like to take this opportunity to personally thank Mr. Warren for always so promptly responding to my requests for information. Some of them sometimes might seem a little bit off the wall, but he's never indicated that he treats them as such. Thank you very much, Mr. Warren.
Excellent.
And thirdly, I came in as the gentleman who I assume is our city of Placerville's lobbyist. I was interested in his national debt analysis and I would have loved to have asked him and though I realize that, you know, this is not the opportunity, but I would have loved to have asked him about our national, about how he arrived at his breakdown and of course, this is a very controversial thing, but the thing I would specifically have liked to have asked him is what portion of our national debt, which has shot up a lot in the last several years, is due to bailouts of the corporate sector and the banking sector? And I think it's a mistake to overlook those, but I realize that was not his function here tonight. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Veerkamp. Any other person wish to address the council? the council? All right. With that, we will close public comment and move on to item eight, the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item. Is there any, um, member of the council that wishes, wishes to do that?
Can we look at the minutes?
Would you like to pull the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, we'll pull. Item eight point one. Anyone else? All right. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on any item on the consent calendar? All right. Yes. Good evening. Please state your name for the record.
Sue Rodman. I live in Placerville, and the item I'd like to comment is on item eight point four, um, the agreement with EID for, uh, uh, rebates and water conservation. And I'm wondering if there is some kind of split between what the city of Placerville reimburses EID for doing these and, uh, and what the, what EID actually benefits from, uh, for doing these, because it says that we have landscape water surveys, we have approval for irrigation system rebates, residential plumbing retrofits, um, commercial plumbing retrofits and efficiency studies. And then it also says that the city of Placerville will be the ones who pay for this, rather than EID. So, um, I think it's pretty easy to see why EID would want to do this, because if they don't have to deliver as much water to the city of Placerville, then they get, uh, to have more water to disperse to other people to, to gain profits from that. But for the city, I'm wondering what is our, what's our benefit? Why are we paying for these? And what's the benefit to the city?
Okay. Thank you, Sue. All right. Is there any other comments from the public? All right, thank you. With that, I'll, I'll, I'll close public comment on that. Um, question, um, Mr. Morris, can we just get that answered or should we pull it for that?
I'll move that we, uh, pass, uh, the items that weren't pulled, which would be two and three.
Eight point two and eight point three. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, council, uh, it's been, um, moved by Vice Mayor Hagan and, and seconded by, uh, Councilmember Wilkins. All those in, oh, roll call, please. Mrs. Edo.
Councilmember Barelli.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hagan.
Aye.
Mayor Mattson.
Aye.
Councilmember Patton.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkins.
Aye.
Okay, and we will get to those answered after our public hearing. Uh, number, item number nine, ordinances, non-scheduled. And with that, we move on to public hearing, item ten point one, to adopt a resolution adopting a SEQA mitigated nega- negative declaration and a mitigated monitoring and reporting program for the 2012 El Dorado Trail projects, Ray Lawyer Drive to Main Street and Clay Street to Bedford Avenue. Mr. Webb, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Thank you very much. Uh, can you hear me okay? Yeah?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, the item before you tonight, uh, is a very exciting project for us. Uh, it's a basically a completion of two, uh, missing segments of the El Dorado Trail that go through the city. Uh, the first segment, um, that's throughout this, you'll see referred to as segment one, is, uh, uh, just about a mile-long section of abandoned railroadway that, uh, goes from Ray Lawyer Drive down to Main Street, the intersection of Main and Fornie Road. Um, that section, that abandoned railroadway is effectively providing a dirt, uh, unpaved trail of sorts at, at this point in time, but it's not been formalized or in, in any way to date. Um, the second segment is, uh, just behind this building here, in fact, uh, and it runs from Clay Street, the intersection at Clay Street, uh, all the way to the pedestrian overcrossing at Bedford. Um, and so that's, and that's about eight hundred feet, uh, foot-long section of, of trail. The, uh, two segments have been going through, uh, preliminary design phase as well as environmental review phase at this time, and this project is funded by, um, a transportation enhancement program dollars that, uh, were secured and, with the assistance of the El Dorado County Transportation Commission. Uh, and the program funding is, is outlined in, in the staff report, uh, but it's, uh, for design, uh, segment one is, uh, fifty thousand dollars in, for design and environmental for that first segment, and then forty-five, uh, thousand set aside for the Clay to Bedford, uh, segment. The, uh, uh, intent, while these are two separate, uh, components of trail, uh, the intent is to, again, design and put them out to bid, uh, as a package, uh, just to, uh, realize some economies of scale, hopefully in the bidding process and ultimately in the construction process. Um, the, uh, project, uh, I'll give you a brief overview of, of some of the key components of the project, uh, but I will note that the, the primary item before you this evening is a request that the city council, uh, approve the mitigated negative declaration that's been prepared, as well as the mitigation, uh, the mitigation monitoring, uh, report, uh, for the, uh, negative declaration via the resolution that's, uh, enclosed with your staff report. Um, the ad- adoption of the environmental review document, uh, that's been prepared is, uh, the critical next step to proceeding towards securing funding for the construction phase. Um, so with that, I'll, I'll give a brief, uh, background and, and description of some of the key components of the project. I'll note, too, that you have some, uh, larger-scale, uh, plans of, of the preliminary designs that have been developed to date by our, uh, engineering consultant, Omni Means. Um, and with us here tonight, we have Nate Stong, our city engineer, of course, who's, uh, very much involved in the project, as well as Steve McMurtry. Um, Steve, you can raise your hand real quick so they know who you are. Uh, he's from De novo Planning Group. They're our consultants, uh, on the environmental, uh, preparation of the environmental document. So the, uh, again, the trail, the two trail segments will, um, really start to, to give us better completion of the El Dorado Trail system, uh, which is really a regional trail network designed for both bicyclists, pedestrians, equestrians, um, strollers, you know, you name the method of, of non-motorized transportation, and it's really what it's intended to, to accommodate. Um, the system, uh, that's, that's been looked at, um, we've been looking at a number of different, uh, components, but the, um, to give you a sense of, of the design, uh, the first, uh, segment, uh, again, from Ray Lawyer down to Main Street, the longer of the two segments, uh, there are preliminary analysis of it is looking at an eight-foot-wide paved trail section, uh, with, uh, four-foot-wide decomposed granite shoulder on one side, one edge of that, and then a two-foot-wide decomposed granite shoulder on the other. And that's to accommodate, again, multiple, uh, users on the trail network at any given time. Oftentimes, equestrians, uh, runners, walkers, uh, are interested in having that softer shoulder on the edge, um, gives them a little better feeling of security, a little softer surface to, to run on. Uh, the, um, segment, um, that, there, there are some alternatives that, that have been looked at with that, uh, segment as well, uh, that could include a ten-foot wave, a ten-foot-wide, uh, paved section of trail with two-foot-wide decomposed granite shoulders. Um, and that's actually something that Caltrans' updated design manual would tend to prefer, uh, but at this point, staff has actually been leaning more towards the eight-foot trail section with the larger decomposed granite, uh, shoulders to it. Um, but that's still something that we, uh, have yet to finalize. On the Clay to Bedford, uh, section, segment right, uh, back here, um, that's, uh, while it's a shorter trail section, it's, uh, it also provides some, uh, some unique opportunities, uh, we think, uh, with the opportunity to create some, uh, trail identity and potential gateway or gateways, uh, to the, uh, to the community, to the, uh, to Main Street, uh, here. And in your, in your staff report, you'll see, um, and, uh, some imagery that's been generated by, um, by Omni Means, again, our consultant, with, uh, what one of those options, you know, could look like. Um, and that is, uh, providing a, uh, kind of a pedestrian seating, uh, node, kind of on the, on the edge of the trail, where it provides amenities like pedestrian seat walls, uh, bike racks, uh, for, uh, which could be especially useful for folks that might be coming here to town hall, um, or even into just Main Street, uh, in general, uh, providing some identity through a gateway, uh, arch, uh, sign, um, and also potentially even, uh, thing, uh, amenities like, uh, a, uh, a bike, a bicycle, uh, repair station, for example, which we start to see more and more on these more formalized trails, uh, which is a fairly inexpensive way of providing things like an air pump for, uh, for tires, um, simple tools that someone might need in order to, uh, to do a quick repair on their bicycle on the fly. So, the, um, um, the amenity that's, that type of amenity, uh, is been included, uh, in the, uh, contract with Omni Means to help us create some of these imagery, some of these images, uh, and would also be included, uh, at the time of putting the project out to bid as an add alternate, uh, because it's not clear at this time whether the funding will, will really be there in order to actually install these amenities, um, in and of itself. So, it may, it may be necessary to identify some additional funding source, either through other grant opportunities or, or just other funds, uh, to, to install some of those amenities, uh, ultimately. The, uh, other component that's, uh, that's really been, uh, looked at with, uh, staff and Omni Means is, uh, some wayfinding along the trail network. Uh, by way of, uh, identifying and starting to design, uh, signage program that would clearly direct pedestrians and cyclists, uh, to the trail segments, particularly because there's a gap in the, in the trail between the, the Bedford segment and, uh, the, uh, west end of, of Main Street where it picks up again on, on the new segment that would go to Ray Lawyer. Um, there's been some discussion of, uh, doing, uh, the wayfinding signs to create kind of a, a branding, uh, for the trail, all along the trail, uh, in the city, uh, so that there's, uh, a standardized design that's easily recognizable, uh, and helps direct people to the, to the trail system. Uh, but also, it includes a concept of, uh, because Main Street really acts as, um, acts as the bike trail for, uh, for this, for the intervening segment, uh, we've also been exploring the concept of, of utilizing what are called share rows, uh, on Main Street. Um, and again, it's still in a conceptual stage, um, and, uh, would certainly appreciate any input from, uh, from the community and council as we proceed forward with design, uh, but it's a way of, of helping to identify to both motorists and cyclists that you're sharing the roadway here. There's not a marked bicycle lane, you know, be cautious when you're opening your car doors and, and parked on the side of the road. Um, but also as a cyclist, be cautious, because you two are sharing the roadway with vehicles, and they're much bigger and heavier than you are. So, um, you know, it's, it's a, uh, it's a fairly, relatively new, uh, uh, you know, marking, uh, symbol, but it's, it's being, it's catching on in quite a few communities as a way of, of, uh, helping, uh, helping to identify these types of, uh, of segues between trails. Uh, excuse me. Um, the, um, the environmental review component of the project, actually, before I, before I run on to that, uh, the, um, design, uh, as well as the environmental review component, um, have been, uh, out with, uh, a public review period, uh, that began on February fourth, uh, for, uh, preparation of the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, which is the SEQA document that we've prepared for both trail segments in one combined, uh, document. Uh, that environmental analysis was circulated for public review and comment, uh, for the thirty-day period, uh, from February fourth and ended March sixth. Uh, but during that time, uh, we had notified, uh, folks of the, of the availability of the document, had it posted online. A number of interest groups, uh, certainly, uh, it was provided to, as well as other jurisdictions, uh, and also the State Clearinghouse, which is, uh, basically a means of disseminating the document, uh, in its draft form to any state agency that might have interest in, uh, in the scope of the project. Um, the project during that time, uh, and when we did that notice, uh, was the, tonight's meeting was, uh, noticed, uh, for the city council, but also, um, during the review period, we, uh, noticed a, a meeting with the Recreation and Parks Commission, um, uh, to have a hearing and to have some discussion, both of, of the design, as it has been presented to date, uh, but also the environmental document. Um, the Rec and Parks Commission is probably not the most typical commission to be presented with, with projects like this, but we felt it prudent and, um, I think probably as, as one of the most appropriate commissions, really, to bring this project before. Um, they're not used to seeing kind of capital-type projects, but again, it's, it's really, I think, right up, right up their, their alley, so to speak. Um, and, and they provided some very good insights and, and input. Um, we had, uh, some public comment at that meeting, but mostly it was a discussion and, and more of a roundtable discussion about the design, uh, a few comments and questions about the environmental. Uh, during that review period, uh, ending on March sixth, we were, did receive two comment letters on the initial study, uh, negative declaration, negative declaration, and, um, the, the comment letters largely were very supportive of the project. Um, the, um, the comments, uh, did not raise any new issues of significance with respect to environmental impacts that, uh, would warrant, uh, changing the conclusions of, of the document. Um, the response to those comments that we received, when combined with the draft initial study, negative declaration, uh, are what constitute the final mitigated negative declaration. Uh, and that's the document that's before you tonight for your consideration for adoption. Um, that also includes the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which is basically a synopsis of the, of the mitigation measures or conditions of approval, as it, as it were, uh, that would need to be monitored to make sure that they're implemented to keep environmental impacts, uh, to a minimum. That document just helps us basically, uh, go through a checklist and, and assign responsibility for monitoring along the way. So the, the next steps, uh, are certainly to, uh, request the council adopt the, uh, the environmental document tonight. Uh, and, uh, if, if that is, uh, accomplished, then we would continue, uh, working with the EDC TC to secure construction funding, uh, for the next phase. Um, the construction would be anticipated for, uh, spring, summer of, uh, 2014, and, um, we would continue to work on the, the design concept, uh, and further vet that with, uh, with the community. Um, and I believe when we, uh, were at the Rec and Park Commission meeting with the preliminary design, we said we would return once the design concept had been further, um, a bit further along. So, that would be one of the key next steps as well. Um, so with that, uh, our recommendation tonight is that this council adopt the resolution, um, adopting the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the 2012 El Dorado Trail projects, Ray Lawyer Drive to Main Street and Clay Street to Bedford pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. Thank you very much. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Webb. Appreciate it. All right. Are there any questions for staff at this point? And we'll start with, uh, Vice Mayor Hagan.
Um, yeah, I was looking at the pedestrian overcrossing structure at Bedford, and the pedestrian railing, is that to keep the pedestrians off the freeway, or is it, uh, a crash barrier? Because my, my concern is this goes to the outside between Highway Fifty and the existing structure. It doesn't come to the inside of that structure, so it's not a lot of room there. Um, you're, you're the engineer.
I'll try to answer that.
Yeah.
The, um, you're referring to the proposed railing or the existing?
It, it just says pedestrian railing, and existing, I guess, would be, I, I didn't look at it close enough, because it's the first I saw the plan in detail. Um, I guess I could've gone on the site or online, but I didn't see it, but it, it just where it says pedestrian railing, uh, right there at the very top left corner.
That's to, I'm sorry to interrupt. Provide, um, separation for the pedestrians from walking onto the expressway. That's the designation of, of the highway at this location.
Okay.
It's not a freeway designation through the city. Um, it, it will need to be a breakaway railing for, uh, the highway design manual, um, requires objects within the, the roadside area to be, uh, breakaway. So it, it is solely to provide, uh-
So it breaks away before it hits a pedestrian, or it breaks away-
If that were to occur, unfortunately, yes.
Or if it's concrete, would, would reflect them back in there. If it's like the center divide, it would, you know, obviously, uh- If it's like the center divide, it would, you know, obviously, or like a K-rail, it would deflect the car, hopefully. People seem to have a high propensity for speed right in that area, trying to get in that little short hop, you know, they jump, jump on it to, to beat the other lanes. So, it's kind of a little, little race there. When the light turns green, it's like, who can get the first? And I'm surprised we haven't had any major accidents there, or maybe we've had a few minor, but anyway.
A lot of rearenders on, on 50, but.
At that section?
At, at that location, not too many.
No, just beyond, yeah.
None, none stand out as far as merge or.
Merge type?
Yeah, accidents, from my memory. But there are other locations through town where we've got pedestrian curb returns and, you know, crossings of the expressway. So, this would be consistent with that, that approach, understanding that this is the last light, and you're accelerating out of town, but you, you still should be below, you know, 50 miles an hour in that range. It's a 40, five mile an hour.
Should be. I, I enter that freeway at least twice a day.
Have you seen Carl drive?
No. I'm the, I'm the old fogey that, that goes on at about 45.
Very passionate.
So, anyway, that was just a question I, or the spot I noticed, anyway. And then the, the existing trail where it comes up to Clay Street is a 8, 8, 2 and 2? That design, it shows it on the right-hand, lower-right side of the, the paper we got?
I believe the existing trail east of Clay Street is 10 feet wide.
Oh, it is? Okay. Great. Thanks.
Councilmember Wilkins, do you have any questions for staff?
No questions.
Okay. Councilmember Borelli?
I'm wondering about that, where it, it's narrowing down to eight feet. Where is that on?
On the, on the segment from Clay to Bedford?
Yeah, I'd.
Where it's shown in blue.
Oh, it's in blue? Okay.
There's a note near the middle of, of the top of the page that says, "Begin restricted width trail and transition." Is that the area there?
It's right here.
Oh, okay. All right. Now I'm with you. Oh, okay. Okay. So, that's narrowing it by two feet from, and is, is that just a small portion? I'm sorry, I just got this map too, so I'm just viewing this.
We have a restricted area from, you know, the existing slope of, of Highway 50 there, up and to the, and around the overcrossing. So, all that area shown in blue is, would need to narrow to the eight-foot.
Okay. So, it's pretty.
Width.
There's no blue on our map. Sorry. It's black.
Is it, is that west of Town Hall or east of Town Hall, that section?
It's west.
West.
Okay, so it's between here and the freeway.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Or Bedford Avenue.
I'm not sure if you're familiar with the, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the rock drainage that, that crosses the area currently. It's, it starts at about that location.
Okay.
And goes west to Bedford.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Patton, any questions?
I do have a few questions.
Okay.
Parking. Has there been any, do we have a long-range plan for parking, either at Forney Road and Main Street, or Ray Lawyer Drive and Forney Road? I mean, at Clay Street, you have the Ivy House parking lot, but there's a serious parking problem already at Forney Road at the terminus there of the trail. And we aren't, I don't see anything, I don't see, I haven't seen anything or heard anything about a long-range plan for parking.
Frankly, neither have I, so I, that would be something that I would take back to our designers of the Western Placerville Interchanges Project.
Yeah.
A couple of meetings ago, this council authorized the, the next phase of design for Western Placerville Interchanges with Dawken, and that would be something that, that we would incorporate. And I agree that the parking is informal, it's across the street, there, there are some concerns there, so that, that would be something that we would incorporate.
Actually, there's some park and ride at, at the hill that's been brought down partway at.
Ray Lawyer Drive overcrossing.
Ray Lawyer Drive, at the Placerville Drive overcrossing, that hill there, that middle circle, that is, has a design in for a park and ride.
Oh, where the stairs are?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then I believe there were, we were looking at another spot at Ray Lawyer Drive, but I didn't, I don't think because of the final design drawings hadn't been done yet, we didn't, but we talked about the need for those two spots for sure for park and ride, which again.
But that parking spot does not access the trail.
Correct.
That hill by Innenampberger does not access the trail.
No, it's a sidewalk and come back.
Yeah.
But yeah, we, we understand where you're.
Hopefully, they want, they're there for exercise. It's like pulling up to the front door of the gym, so you don't have to use the stairs.
Believe me, I've walked this town.
You're correct, you're correct, Councilmember Patton. In terms of the right, just to the edge of the Ray Lawyer Drive intersection at, at Forney, there's, you know, quite a few, you see quite a few vehicles kind of parked just off the side of the road. Many of them may be accessing the trail, or especially on weekends, you know, you see the bike racks and the cars, and it's kind of a convenient spot to pull off, albeit informal, as Nate said. And I think the, I, I agree with Nate, that the Western Placerville Interchange, this is, this is really an ideal time for us to be looking at opportunities there for maybe doing some more formal parking.
And I, I'll bring this up at the same time. Over the years, the area where the staging area, the offices for the Caltrans Highway 50 Ops project, has been sort of talked about as being an area for parking and for maybe some amenities, maybe even an off-leash dog park. And I'd like to know if that, is that just hearsay? Can we like move forward and look for funding for that? Can we think about that in terms of how that could work with this area and that historic bridge? I mean, we have an opportunity to incorporate that historic bridge also in this design somehow. I know it's on the other side of Main Street, but nonetheless, it, it's right all in that same proximity, and I think we're doing a disservice to not look at it as a long-range plan. It's important to do segments as we can afford them, but I think it's also very critical to do a long-range plan, so that we can, as we get funding, we already know what we, what we want.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I think as far, as far as funding availability with these two segments for the design and environmental, it's, it's, it's very, very tight and limited. But to your point about looking at longer range, yeah, I mean, that, that area there along the bridge, which has kind of been more recently uncovered with, with the clearing that we did not too long ago with the creek, you could actually see the, the labeling on the bridge now, which is nice to see. You know, Nate and I, we've, we have had some conversations about what the possibilities are there. We too have heard, you know, ideas bantered about the community for, you know, hey, is this a potential dog park area? Is it, you know, potential, just public amenity spot? You know, it's also been looked at as, you know, is it a potential, you know, flood control basin of sorts if, if it was designed? There's limitations with that kind of a concept at that site, but there's definitely possibilities there. And, you know, I don't know if there's, is there anything you want to add? No.
If you use it as a flood control, you might be able to get funding from a different source.
Right, and you know.
Well, there's a lot of dog parks.
Coordination with Caltrans, of course, is a key component, but.
And then I have just a couple other things. One of the problems on the trail is our, our etiquette signs, or the lack thereof, where people know where the bikes belong and people know where pedestrians belong. And I, I'd like to forward that on as a concern. And also, I'd like to put it out there that maybe we could have a, a little challenge to the art community to come up with a design for the Eldorado Trail logo itself, that perhaps could be a little bit more unique to our area. These are very generic symbols, and I, I think that, again, we have an opportunity here, if we're going to sign and brand our trail, to make it a little bit more than the, the Microsoft symbols that I see. You know, and not that they're bad, but they could be so much, we have a very talented art community in this area. So, those, those were my concerns, was the etiquette signs, if we're going to start signing and branding, and then the trail signs and the parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Patton. I, I agree with your comments. I have one, one question before we open the public hearing. Can you kind of explain to me, I'm having a hard time understanding what's going to happen on the corner of Forney, Berg, and Placerville Drive? I'm a little concerned about that corner with Fulmer's there, there's a business there. There's a lot happening on that corner that, that concerns me, because it seems like the trail just kind of ends. Can you explain maybe the safety features or what's going to happen with that segment of the, of the trail, the roads that are converging at one point?
Yeah, that, that too is an area that we had identified early on with our, with our design team as.
Excuse me, councilmembers, I cannot hear staff. Sorry. Thank you. Sorry, Mike.
No, that, that too is an area that we had identified with our consultant early on as being a real critical juncture, just as it is with the, where the trail meets with the, at the base of the Bedford pedestrian overcrossing. Those two points are quite critical. The, I, I think in, in short, you know, we're not quite far enough along in the design to, to have that, have that vetted just yet, but absolutely, we, we see that as something where we really need to make sure that pedestrians all aren't just jutting out into the, into the roadway there, of course. And there are, there are definitely methods that can be employed here to, to ensure that that, that's the case.
Great. Thank you. And like I said, I realize we're not in the final design stage, but I would like to go on record as paying particular, close attention to that. You know, maybe we shorten the trail a little bit and have a staging, a landing, exactly, a landing or, or something. A gateway, exactly. So, that's, that was my question there. All right. So, with that, I'd like to open the public hearing and invite public comment on this project. If anyone wishes to address the council, please come forward. Please state your name for the record, and good evening.
My name's Steve Noe. I also have a concern with Bedford specifically. There are times when it gets a little congested with cars, and the, having that as a terminus, because you got the, from that point up, you got a little bit of Clay Street, you know, you gotta get across that. That's not really a big deal, because it's not a lot of traffic there, but once you hit Bedford, where do you guys see that going as far as the trail? Are we going to dog it back to Main Street and then, then down Main Street? Because that's really congested, and there's some safety concerns there for anybody. So, that's my only comment.
Great. Thank you, Steve. Good evening.
Good evening. Eileen Crim. Thank you for this, considering the continuation of the trail. And I guess my concerns are with the, Clay to Bedford, and environmentally, there's that wonderful redwood tree, and so please be kind to our redwood tree. And then, to me, we have the fancy overcrossing, and I would love to see a continuation of some kind of trail into a safe route to school for the high school and the schools, and also our wonderful park. Any questions?
No, thank you, Eileen. Any other comment? Good evening, Sue, again.
Good evening. You knew you weren't going to escape on this one, didn't you? Okay, I read this. And I think a mitigated negative declaration is absolutely appropriate for these projects. They aren't going to cause any environmental damage. In fact, I think they will be an environmental improvement. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
I have one change I'd like to see us make on page 34, on mitigation measure six. The very last sentence said, says, "Any tree removal shall be replaced by the same tree species at a three-to-one ratio." I think that that's fine for native trees, but we have a lot of aleanthus in that area, which is a weedy species, and it's not even in the Placerville-approved trees that you can plant. So, I would like to see us correct that and say, "If we remove trees other than weed-species trees, if we remove aleanthus, we're just doing a good job in helping with fire prevention and getting rid of some of our weeds. But if we have to remove native trees, then those should be replaced with native trees or trees that are on the Placerville list of trees acceptable for landscape planting." And other than that, I'd like to tell them, "You did a good job."
Great.
And, and I agree with, we do have a problem. I was wondering if we could take over the bridge, that old historic bridge that's right there next to the Kentucky Fried Chicken, and migrate that as your staging area to go into the trail that starts then on the other side. It seems to me like that would be a good place for that, and a good use for it, and it's right adjacent, and there is some parking there and some parking across the street, so it's not as congested as the other end. And for the other end, I'm wondering if we couldn't do something with the staging area that Doug Verkamp is using right now, next to the Ray Lawyer Overpass Bridge, and make that into some parking area that's pretty close and available to be used to get to the trail there. So, it would be right where the trail ends coming from Main Street, and just before you pick it up on the other side of the jail. So, those would be my suggestions for further study for trail design there. But I think this, you've done a good job.
All right.
This is, this is great. This is something we need.
Thank you, Sue, for your comments. Hello again, Evelyn.
Evelyn Verkamp, Placerville. As an already confessed user of the trail, I nonetheless want to ask you a question. And that is specifically in respect of the portion of the trail that, and I have not looked at the map, so excuse my vagueness, but the Main Street, Clay Street portion, was that included in the plan that was taken to court by the Friends of Historic Hangtown, the roundabout lawsuit that was case number PC-20110145? My understanding is that if the city is to undertake any portion of the project which was encompassed in that lawsuit, that the city would have to do an EIR to move forward, and that a negative declaration would not do the trick. So, I suppose there are two questions. One is, was the area that I'm speaking of part of what was encompassed by that lawsuit? And number two, if it was or is, is, do you consider that any sort of an impediment to going forward with this without a full EIR?
We'll get that answered for you, Evelyn. Thank you. Any other questions? Or any other comments? All right, that, with that, we will close the public hearing and get those questions and comments addressed. And so, the Bedford intersection, as far as where that's going, I, I think you're, you're planning on addressing, addressing that as, as an issue. Mike, can you briefly speak to the redwood tree? I know that is a, you know, a concern. It's, it's listed in our, in our staff report, but just briefly talk about how the project will impact that.
That's correct. Yeah, there's, I think the redwood in reference is actually just out here, is the corner of Clay and the intersection of the unimproved trail segment right now. That was raised actually as, during, in one of the comment letters as well that we responded to. The, the tree itself is not a protected species, it's not a, you know, locally protected or, or native one. The tree has been in, in some form of distress for, for some time. You can tell from the, the more yellowing of color of the leaves, very likely due to Highway 50 impacts being immediately adjacent to that, and compaction and what have you over time. The, nonetheless, you know, the tree, it's a substantial tree. It, it does seem to be coming back somewhat, just based on our observations over time here. And, you know, we, while it's not required as a, as a mitigation per se, we had committed in our response to that comment that we would. as a mitigation per se, we had committed in our response to that comment that we would take, you know, all the measures that we reasonably can to further protect that tree during the construction and during the trail project. And so we've, that was actually discussed also at the Wreck and Park Commission meeting, and our engineering consultant is aware of the desire to do it. So there's certain things that we can do from a construction staging standpoint. For example, you know, not putting heavy equipment or anything underneath that tree that's going to further impact the root structure, for example, you know, pulling the trail as far from the root base of that tree and the drip line of that tree as we can. It won't be impossible to avoid it altogether, but there are certain things that we can do to minimize the impacts as much as we can.
All right. Thank you very much for clarifying that. And Sue's comments about the native trees versus the, I don't even, obnoxious trees, I like that. That's an excellent comment. And what about that?
No, and I think that's absolutely appropriate, that if there's something non-native that's being removed, that we wouldn't, you know, replace it at three to one with more non-native. So I think, I think we probably had felt it was almost implied, but we could clarify that even further to say, to add those words of three to one ratio of native species only, for example, on that particular line.
What would the process be to, if you had that changed in the negative deck? I mean, can we just direct you to do that? Do we need to put that in our motion or?
Because it's, yeah, I think that would be the appropriate thing to do. It's not a substantive change that's going to change our conclusions in the document in any way. So, and I certainly offered it to Mr. McMurtry if he had any comment on that, feel free to weigh in on it as well. So I'd like he might want to.
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Steve McMurtry. I'm a planner with DeNoble Planning Group. And I would just add too, in the motion, it should be a motion to change the mitigation measure within the negative declaration, but also within the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. So there's essentially two documents that are being adopted by resolution. And the change, in a lot of ways, are duplicative. The mitigation monitoring and reporting program includes everything within the mitigated negative declaration. So the change needs to occur in both.
Great. Thank you for that clarification.
Before we move off of that...
Yes, Councilmember Patton.
I think it's important, actually, what Sue said was not just native with native, but she said native are replaced with the approved tree list that the City of Placerville has adopted. I think that's really important that we do that.
Okay. So that can be part of a motion?
If that was possible.
Okay. Thank you. And then, so thank you very much, Mr. Webb. And this last question is probably a question for Mr. Driscoll. Can you please talk about the lawsuit and the impediments and how it got broken out and all of that?
Sure.
Thank you.
And Ms. Veerkamp raised a good question, and it's one that we have thought about before proceeding with this. And while I wasn't the attorney who actually represented the city in that litigation, I am familiar with it, and we did discuss this with those attorneys. They felt that going ahead with the trail portion, and it was a portion of the project, the entire project that was the subject of that lawsuit, they felt that going ahead with this portion was not going to be an issue and that this one aspect of it was not bound by the court's judgment, because it was simply an aspect of it. Whereas the court's judgment encompassed in that case encompassed the entire project that was before it, which included not only the trail, but also included, you know, the changes to the parking lot, the bridge, the roundabout, those other areas. And those were the areas, quite frankly, where the impacts were discussed by the court. There were really no impacts as to the trail portion of that old project that were the subject of the court's decision. So all of the impacts related to the other areas, and certainly if the city were to come back with those projects, we would be looking at an EIR. However, because the impacts of this were minimal, it was not what the court focused on. We also, in an abundance of caution, did provide the attorney for the petitioners in that case with a notice that this was going to be coming up before the council. We provided copies of the agenda items in the past, so that we're not trying to fool anybody and sneak this one by, but rather let them know that in fact, we are going to proceed with this because we feel it's a different project and therefore not governed by the court's decision.
Was there any response from the litigant's attorney?
No.
No. All right. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it. Okay, at this point, are there any other council member comments on this item before us? Are we ready to entertain a motion?
Well, the only comments I think had to do with the staging areas, but I think, again, as Steve said and others out there, that we really do need to address the staging area at Fornie Road and some kind of parking landing areas there. And also, on the other end, it's my understanding that the Ray Lawyer, you have to be careful where the off-ramp comes on from eastbound, but, because that lands about where Veerkamp's trucks are parked right now. So, but there is some areas in there that could be used for park and ride, which would fall into the highway construction funding. Whereas the trail construction, I'm not sure. We might be able to get some funding for some trail parking, at least some enhancements along Fornie Road. The section between Bedford and Fornie Road, if you will, that whole section, the reason we're using the downtown Main Street is because we don't have a legitimate, safe method to cross Bedford Spring, Coloma Street. There's not a, at grade crossing at the freeway would be extremely hazardous. So there would be, that it's like Bedford. They would assume they're going to get off their bike at the overcrossing and walk because it's going to be a regular sidewalk there until they get back to Main Street. So hopefully the bikers will be, the ones that'll be using this will be more like family oriented. They may be walking down Main Street with their bike. They may be riding, sharing rides if they're more experienced. But if they've got kids with them, hopefully they would be utilizing an abundance of caution on Main Street. But that's, it's just not a safe place to put the kids out next to the freeway and cross at Center Street and those other areas. So that was a determination seven, eight years ago, seven years ago, probably. Anyway, my only comment.
Would someone like to entertain a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution adopting the sequo mitigated negative deck for the 2012 Eldorado Trail Project, Ray Lawyer Drive to Main Street and Clay Street to Bedford Avenue, with the recommendation that we modify the mitigated negative deck mitigation measure six to include that any tree removal shall include replacements of the tree species at a three to one ratio coming from either the natives or the adopted Placerville list, tree list, and that we also modify the mitigation monitoring plan to stay the same.
I'll second that. Okay. Before we take a mo, I just have a point of clarification. Do we need to amend that to also adopt a resolution adopting the sequo mitigated negative deck and the mitigated monitoring and reporting program? Do we need to clarify that in the motion as well?
Yeah, I think it would be good as a friendly amendment, perhaps.
So can we make that amendment?
Because, yeah, it would be to...
Oh, sure. It says, it doesn't say it here. It says it here.
No, it doesn't. Right. Okay. Yeah. Oh, yeah, I would amend my motion to adopt the mitigation monitoring plan as well.
Resurrection to adopt a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program.
And I'll amend my second.
With the wording to be the same.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Patton. Well done. And seconded by Councilmember Barelli. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Motion carries. Thank you so much. All right. So with that, we move on to item 11, discussion action items, none scheduled. And Councilmember reports and requests for future agenda items. And we'll start with you, Councilmember Patton.
I don't really have too much to report, but I do, I would request an item that has come up on my radar screen, and that is the safety of Benham Street Park. And I've, I sent an email to our city manager, and it was forwarded to the police chief, and I have been alarmed at the amount of activity that's going on at Benham Street Park and would appreciate if my fellow council members would perhaps entertain an idea of having the police write a staff report about what our options are to deal with this problem as we move into summer. It's my understanding now that we have residents and people with families that don't go to that park because of what's going on there. And that, to me, is an absolute travesty. And I would like, I would really appreciate if our, if this council would look into that.
I would absolutely agree with you. Do we have a, Mr. Morris, did you have a?
Can I just comment on that quickly? I see John wants to also. We are preparing an ordinance, right? Part of that is to outlaw smoking at certain parks. And there are other provisions along with that that was reviewed by the Parks and Recreation Commission that will be coming back to you for review. We're working on that. City Attorney Driscoll is working on that. My only thing is I would suggest maybe, can we bring that back together with that? That would be part of that discussion. We expect that coming back in April, I believe.
So could you expand that to include options for handling this ongoing challenge?
Yeah, we definitely can. We'll have the ordinance that will address some of those items, but we'll, the chief and Steve Yule, our Recreation and Parks Director, have both been working on that and looking at ways to resolve that problem. So I think that's a good opportunity for that discussion, so that will be coming back.
I would just caution that it's not my intention to make the park off limits. There are people who smoke that are not troublesome. This is a troublesome part of our community, and it is causing me a lot of concern. And it also is causing concern on some of the merchants on Main Street, that this element is taking over. And just saying, just putting a no smoking sign, in my opinion, isn't going to do it. And so we, over the years, have worked with the police department to address different things downtown, and I talked about it a little bit a couple of weeks ago, how we did those things without making the area off limits. So, I mean, for me, I would like to have more than just a no smoking ordinance. And I don't know what my other council members feel about that, if you have some other ideas. But it's, to me, it's really dear to my heart that our parks remain open to everyone, that no one element takes over. And that's what I've seen happen.
Any other council member comments on that?
I agree with Carol, that the non-smoking people that are upstanding, they're smokers, they have a right to use the park. Certain areas obviously shouldn't be smoking, but yeah, that's not going to do it. I agree.
Vice Mayor Hagan?
I had made a comment to Steve Yule and also at the city council before about making that a family-friendly park. That one has a very limited area where smoking is allowed. But I think that one could be a non-smoking park without offending the rest of them. That particular park is very small in nature. It's offensive to me as a non-smoker when I go there, even if I'm on the other side, like during National Night Out, just because of the smoke that wafts through the area, and especially if I have my grandkids with me. And I'm not afraid of most of those guys. And I think that's the other thing, is making a presence and confronting them and just saying, hey, guys, watch language. Got little kids around here. I mean, you don't have to be abusive. You have to be, you have to take a proactive stand if you're a citizen. If you give up, they will take it over. And we need to remember that. By the time they get there, the police department, those people scatter.
They scatter.
So, you know, if there's a, at least if there's a non-smoking, the Wreck and Park guys that are working there or the, not that I want our lifeguards to be out there banging heads and saying, hey, you guys get out of here. We're going to, you know, that's not their job. But they certainly have the observation and the ability to call the police department.
Thank you.
What I've observed is that basketball, that basketball court is right next to where the little children are. And the basketball court is where a lot of these people are hanging out. And what I've observed is that they don't really pay attention, that there's a lot of little children around. So I think, I think the no smoking will do some good because most of them, as I've observed, do smoke. And so by not having the opportunity, that maybe they'll find another place to gather where they can. But I don't think it's going to do the whole trick. But, and I don't know what we can do about the, you know, that's what the basketball court is all about, is to provide, you know, so, but it's, in some ways, it's being abused, I think, from what I've observed.
So I'm hearing consensus that the council would like a larger discussion on this matter, including perhaps the ordinance of no smoking. Yes, Mr. Driscoll?
Well, I was just going to mention that the ordinance that is coming back is not just no smoking. For example, the Recreation and Park Commission wanted us to outlaw loitering. And I looked at him and said...
It's a park.
Isn't that what you do in a park, is loiter? So I don't think that will be possible, but there may be other things that we can look at to try and curb it. But my thought too is, if you take actions to outlaw this and move this element out of the park, where do they go? We have to address it somewhere. So it may be, it may be part of a larger problem, but we need to continue to look at and attempt to address. Because I've observed it also. I mentioned this to Councilmember Patton, that I've been up there several times. And I'm amazed, she mentioned, first mentioned, she saw that, I believe you said, between four and five in the afternoon. And it's a much larger problem. I see it all day long up there.
Well, I think, especially with summer approaching and our precious pool just starting to open, I think, I think we need to address it now as far as Benham, but we'd love a larger discussion on the entire problem. But there's probably things we need to do now to make it a summer, family-friendly place.
And Mayor, that's what I was going to say, is that what I've got from Steve Yule was a, basically the minutes of the Wreck and Park Commission's actions. There was about half a dozen ordinances that there was some specificity in terms of what they wanted me to look at. One of them did include banning smoking in all outdoor areas. It would be helpful for me, and not wasting the city's time and money, if I know the wishes of the council in that regard, because if I draft something based on what Wreck and Park says, and then you guys like to do something different, that just takes more time in getting there. So if we're looking at areas where smoking would be prohibited or not, that would be helpful to get that vetted, so I have some idea. But part of the problem is that they've asked me to look at about 50 to 60 different ordinances with little direction on the others. Just, what about these pertain to parks, et cetera? I think I have some idea of what they want in terms of the type of behavior they want to prohibit. And as Cleve said, you just can't prohibit loitering in a park because that's what people do. But you can prohibit annoying and conduct which is injurious to other people's ability to enjoy the park. And so that's what I've been looking at, is to try and structure the ordinances that would address those kind of behaviors and see if we can't prohibit that. But if there's a need, and I guess what I'm finally getting to, and I'm sorry taking so long to do it, if there's a need to deal with Benham specifically, you're looking at a longer process because theoretically, what I would be doing should go back to the Wreck and Parks Commission for review. But if there's a need to do something directly with Benham, then maybe that ought to come to the forefront while this other stuff is being worked on.
Councilmember Patton?
I just have one comment, because this whole conversation has been focused on ordinances and what we, and what we want, how we want to make it off limits. And I'm looking at it more inclusionary and saying, okay, there's a, there's a park in Morro Bay that has chessboards set up so that people come and play chess, and normal people come. And as I said a couple of weeks ago, the more normal people are there, then the more these people don't hang out there. And, you know, there's got to be other ways that parks have dealt with this other than to put their parks off limits. And I, I'm just going to say it again, there are people who smoke cigarettes that are fine, upstanding people and are, and I believe should have use of our parks. They're not all bad. I don't smoke. I don't really want my grandson around smoke, but there are people that do. And I don't want to make our town off limits to people. But that's, I'm just one person. And I, you know, if the other council feels the same, feels differently, that's, you know...
This is turning into an agenda discussion. I have, that's right, I have one more comment to that, though, that I see Benham Park as a unique park to itself. And I don't think what works for Benham Park will work for all of our other parks. And I would like, I would like us to look at Benham Park specifically, because to me, the section in the middle that is accessible to everyone, smokers, non-smokers, and I agree with you that, you know, our parks need to be inclusionary. However, in this specific park, we have the pool on one end, and we have the tot lot on the other, and you can't put smokers in the middle because smoke goes both ways. And so for me, that would weigh in on my decision. Would I want to outlaw smoking in all of our parks? Absolutely not. Benham Park, I think, we need to look at differently because of those, and the basketballs, because of those uses. So for me, that's my perspective. So where do you want to go with this? Do you want an agenda item that we discuss this before we give you direction?
Yeah, we'll, let us go back and look at it. I think we are going to have to bring it back before we have the ordinance. I—I think we are going to have to bring it back before we have the ordinance ready.
Yeah, let's do that.
Have a discussion. The other thing I want to caution of is let's not—we need—we need to recognize the Recreation and Park—
Absolutely.
—role in this also, and where they've—they feed into it. So they have commented on the—the—I'll call it the smoking ordinance, but there's more to it than that. But we need to involve them in the process.
Perhaps you could bring back their recommendations. We could weigh in on Benham in a loose way, and that would give you better direction. We're not trumping them, but you're kind of getting consensus so we can guide this process together based on their recommendations.
Could we get a copy of what they've recommended? Could you email us a copy, or is that legal or not?
All 50.
No, no, not all 60, just—no, I'm sorry, if it was more specific to the parks.
If it's just geared—
But if it's all 60, no, I don't want to go there.
Well, they're just a list.
But aren't we talking about Benham Park, and that's what we would like a—
First, yeah. I guess—I guess a short list if you can.
We can put together an agenda item to bring back to you.
A discussion, and let the public weigh in on it, too, before you go further on this. I think that's an important thing. We've gone a little too far in this, as it is.
Madam Mayor?
Okay. Yes?
Can I just—since this is really a big—a lot of this is a public safety issue, just quickly weigh in. One of the things that's been mentioned is that there was an interest, there was a recognition that there needed to be a comprehensive look at a lot of these ordinances. Let me just add that a lot of these ordinances are very old, and the uses of those parks have changed. So what the recognition was, was that—not that we—not that there's a need to exclude certain people, but there's—there's a need to recognize that the uses of our parks have changed, and some of those ordinances are vastly outdated. That's where this all started. Because as policing, we need tools—
Right.
—that are modern to the problems that are occurring now, and we were recognizing that those tools were not there.
Okay.
And so I don't think—I don't think it was approached from the standpoint that we need to exclude, for say—let's say, smokers. I think there was a recognition that maybe in one or two places, smoking was a big problem, whether it's one product or another. And—and that the laws and practices in our society have changed drastically since those—some of these ordinances were created, you know, in the '60s or something like that. So that's the first comment. The—the other comment that—that we'll bring back is one thing that the Police Department does on a constant basis, and especially recognizing where we are. We have very, let's say, seasonal activity. We have different things happening in the winter than we do in the summer, and we're constantly planning and changing and—and trying to be proactive in—in dealing with those things. And that's—that's how we have addressed issues, whether it be downtown, the Ivy House Lot, a—a park that's here. Some of these problems were on Broadway at one time. And so we're very familiar with, for example—for example, gearing up for the summer. June is approaching, a number of events, the warm weather comes, and our activity changes, and we have to change with that. So that's something that we deal with on a constant basis. And then we—we made quite a bit of progress on this park last year at the beginning of summer. We made a—a number of—well, through the summer, we made a number of serious drug arrests, for example. That was a problem we were having, and we made some serious headway on that. So those are some of the things that we can bring back in a more specific way and probably a further discussion about where this goes. But I think—I just want to lay that groundwork, because we are very familiar with dealing with these situations, and those are some of the components I think we need to consider. So just to plant that seed.
All right, thank you. A brief cut—we're getting into a discussion here, so—
Very brief. I just want to—I want to follow up. So are you suggesting that maybe we revisit our ordinances involving parks?
Well, I—yes, I am. I—I think we need to look at some of that in the context of some of them are antiquated, and that's what staff's been working on.
Sounds good.
There's other valid points that have been made. We need to look at our response to the park. I think there are other ideas—creative ideas can come forth to encourage people who want to use the park. Those are great ideas.
We look forward to that discussion.
And council can bring those forward.
Okay, sounds great. Thank you, Councilmember Patton.
I'm going to say one more thing.
Okay, go for it.
And not just related to the parks, but in general, I am glad to hear that we're bringing forward some old ordinances that maybe we should wipe out. I'm a firm believer that—and—and I haven't probably practiced it for the last six, seven, eight years that I've been on the council, but we should be looking at ways to—if we pass a new ordinance, I—I think we should take two off. You know, I'm sorry, I just think—I wish the state—
Buy a new pair of shoes, throw it in the car.
I wish the state would have the guts to do like they did in Canada. And that is, if you bring in a new ordinance, take two off. Take two—you know, if it's something from the '30s or whatever, it's no longer appropriate, let's get rid of it. I mean, it probably—the probably something about tying up horses on Main Street, but we shouldn't do that.
I can't do that.
We should take it off the list, because, I mean, Davey's got to park his horse somewhere.
He doesn't tie him up, though.
One of the things I've thought about in—in looking at all of the things that they wanted us to—to do and to look at and to put in the form of an ordinance is, many of these things are simply rules and regulations. They don't have to be ordinances. And it occurred to me in going through this list that, number one, it'd make my job a lot easier, but number two, we could post in each park a set of rules and regulations. And we have an ordinance that say you use the park, you abide by the rules and regulations. And you don't have to have all the ordinances on the books.
Sounds good.
And it—it's a lot simpler approach.
That makes sense.
You know, like, if you're going to barbecue in the park, you make sure you leave and don't leave any live embers in the barbecue. Different things like that. There's no place in an ordinance—
Great.
—but are good rules and regulations.
Well, we look forward to that, and is there anything else, Councilmember Patton? Good comments.
Thank you.
Councilmember Borelli?
Well, three of us, Wendy and Tricia, and I, attended the first Thursday dinner in Sacramento. It was very interesting, and I—I got the minutes today, and I passed them on to Mike. I think some things were said and that maybe we could use at this particular time. And I went to the EDAC meeting, and then I went to the Board of Supervisors meeting, where it's—it's CDAC now, excuse me, where they presented their recommendations to the board. And then I would like an update on the—the little park up here where the—the Vietnam Plaque and stuff. We haven't heard about it for a while, and I just wonder how that's coming along. That's it.
The judgment?
No, that's a description.
Well, that's a description, but it's not official.
It's not the official park.
Right.
What did you call it?
Judge Moll.
All right. All right. Vice Mayor Hagan?
I did attend the opening of Esquitan, their new cottages up there, last week. I also went to a SECOG meeting, I think, that same morning, a half-day meeting. Nothing of particular significance for up here. There was, in general, overall meetings regarding trans—some transportation issues and transit issues, but nothing directly at this area.
Thank you. Councilmember Wilkins?
I attended the fir—my first first Thursday dinner with Mayor Mattson and Councilmember Borelli, and we have another one coming up on the fourth, I think.
Probably on Thursday, huh?
Actually, the first Thursday.
I was going to say, I had dinner on Thursday, too, but I forgot to report that.
Thank you. The highlights of—of my meetings included—I met with Supervisor Nettie. He called me, and it was the first time the county has invited me in to have a discussion about the homeless, which was exciting to me. And it was—it was the first major discussion I've had where the county has expressed a willingness to cor—collaborate, and so we are moving forward with that. And I—you know, I—Supervisor Nettie asked, he's, you know, what do you need from me? I says, I need an advocate on the Board of Supervisors to—to look at expanding a solution that includes the county. And he says, well, you've got one. So we're talking, you know, with—of course, our Supervisor Veer Camp as well, and that's all we can talk to, but we're continuing that forward. So I am happy to at least have—have that discussion open with the county. So I—I thank him for that. And then I had a—a very enjoyable meeting with Cleve, Steve, and I. That's—it sounds like a—a bad comedy, where we went and visited our Public Works crews and—and had a chance to chat with them to see how they're doing. And—and I have to say, that's just—just a great group of people we have up there. Their demeanor was, you know, they're happy to work in the city, and they're eager to ensure that our city is safe and viable, and just had a really meaningful discussion. So I thank you, Cleve, for setting that up. Always a privilege to—to talk to our staff, so. All right. So that concludes the councilmember reports. We move on to item 13, items pulled from the consent calendar. We'll start with item 8.1, and Councilmember Wilkins, you pulled that. So what is your question on that?
On 11.3, the review, the top three, those are in reverse order. Number three, that was number one.
Okay, let's see. What page are you on?
It's 11—I have item 11.3.
11.3, okay.
And then the listed, when we chose, 1, 2, 3 for Carl to take.
Okay.
They're listed in reverse.
Mr. Morris?
I don't recall, so I'll ask the council, was that correct? Did we prioritize them in the reverse order of what?
We did, because the Hanktown Creek sewer pipe was unanimous. We did it in the rank of—
I think Councilmember Wilkins is correct on that.
No, 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 I'm looking—I counted the votes from the last meeting.
It was item 11.3.
This is the last meeting.
Right.
Yeah, 3 was unanimous, 2 was missing, 1, and 9, the Western, was missing.
Yeah, that is true. That is correct. Was 5, and then 4, 4.
They're just—they're just in reverse.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Thank you for that correction.
Okay, we'll make that change. Thank you.
All right. So with that, do we have a—
So with that correction, I'll move the minutes of the last meeting.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Hagan and seconded by Councilmember Wilkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. And with that, we move on to item 8.4, which—I had the—let me go back to it here.
That's the EID.
So the split between what is our benefit with the EID agreement? And Mr. Warren, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The benefit to the city is compliance with state law. You may recall the State Senate passed Senate Bill X7-7 in 2009, which mandated water suppliers like the city of Plasterville to reduce its water—urban water use by 20% by 2020. And Water Code Section 10608 dot 4 subsection F also goes on to say that water purveyors are—like Plasterville, are to promote water—urban water conservation standards that are consistent with California Urban Conservation Council's adopted best management practices and the requirements for demand management. EID's water efficiency program aligns with the best management practices required by the state, and EID has successfully provided those services over the past several years at a nominal cost. For example, in 2011, the cost was $1,253. 2012, it was just south of $80, and this year, we anticipate approximately $2,400 based on current experience. So the city doesn't have the staffing to run the program, and so we gain from economies of scale from EID's program to gain compliance.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Carl, did you have a comment?
I was going to say, this is an example of us using—or utilizing EID for shared services-type contracts. I'm not sure, but I—I don't they also do the inspections on our backflow preventers or not?
They do on mine.
Well, that's where in—
At the out of my building.
Yeah, I have—that's EID water.
That's right.
So what I'm talking about, in—in the city, are they doing the backflow prevention inspections for us?
Just—just the bulk meters.
Okay.
Those facilities that come into the—
We may want to look at that also, just because of cost savings, because they have a fee on the water that we may be paying part of that fee or not, but it may be less expensive in the long run rather than to give our additional training and so forth. We have limited staffing, so it may be something we look at in the future. But EID has gone from over the—in the past, they used to have—the owner of the building was responsible to get the inspections done by private contractors, and they got to the point where they put on their own staff person to do all those inspections on backflow preventers.
Yeah, but we get—we'd pay for it.
Right, but it's a—but what I'm saying, you're paying a little bit each month to have it done on a regular basis.
Right.
Yes, I could probably get a plumber for less, but compliance was not there. In other words, there was—EID was sending out billing and reminders and—and then saying you didn't get it done, and—and the penalties and so forth. So you—you did pay for it, but now you're paying—but everybody pays, and everybody has it done, and there's—you don't have to start—as an owner, I don't have to go search for the plumber who's qualified to do it.
I think our city manager has a comment to that.
We are working on similar program to that. There's some stuff we need to do. We've had some change in staffing that's delayed a little bit, but that's the—the area we want to move to. We have talked to EID. They're not interested in ta-taking over our program. However, they get a very good rate on these inspections that an outside firm does for them, and they've agreed to let us tag on to their contract—
Great.
—to use that cost.
Good.
So there are some things we're working on in that area.
Good. So anytime we tag on to them, generally, we come out saving money rather than hiring additional personnel.
Sounds good.
Could I make a comment while we're on this?
On item 8.4? Okay.
I'm really surprised—we were given the information of how many retrofits were—that people took advantage, and I was really surprised that more people aren't using them, and I'm wondering if people are aware of it, that they can go through EID and do these, because they're—this is really minimal.
Yeah, the—excuse me. During the time, EID was providing residential toilet rebates and washing machine rebates. It was very popular—it was more popular than it is now, but—and—and those that utilized it are set for a while. But what we could do is provide a flyer in the utility bill at a future—
Yeah, because I took advantage of it.